All right, good evening, and it's a beautiful evening out there. So this is the July 17th, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business actually is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Kamada.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. The next item on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway for open forum, and nobody did sign up, so I just want to make sure there wasn't anybody in the audience that came in, okay? So I will go ahead and close the open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, next, this evening is presentations, we have two. The first presentation is the DARTS 50th Anniversary Proclamation. And before we invite Craig up to speak, which is the Director of Home Services, I am going to ask Councilmember Monique Garza to please read the proclamation, and then council will motion and second it, and then we'll let him come on up and share a little thing, and we've got a framed certificate that we're going to go down in front for a picture, okay? So I'll let you read.
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation, DARTS 50th Anniversary. Whereas the city of Cottage Grove is committed to providing residents access to a high quality of living as they age in their communities. Since 1974, DARTS has served older adults, their families and caregivers with the mission of creating connections that enrich aging. 2024 marks DARTS 50th year of providing services for thousands of older adults across the southeast metro, including Cottage Grove. These services include housework, outdoor chores, home repairs, caregiving resources, resource connections, fulfilling volunteer opportunities, and transportation. Since 2019, the Cottage Grove Loop has helped area seniors stay connected. Volunteer dedication has created intergenerational connections, which in turn result in learning buddies reaching more than 80,000 students and fulfilling aging journeys for our older community members. The city of Cottage Grove celebrates the 50th anniversary of DARTS and recognizes the incredible role it plays in helping people age with dignity in the community of their choice. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaims Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, as DARTS Appreciation Day. Passed this Wednesday, the 17th day of July 2024, by the mayor Myron Bailey.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Garza. So since you did the reading, do you want to make the motion to accept, move forward with this proclamation?
Sure, I'll make the motion to accept the DARTS 50th Anniversary Proclamation.
And I'll take a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So we're official now, so if you would like to head up there and just state your name and address record, I know it's Craig, is it Eggerman?
Eggerman.
Eggerman, and you are the Director of Home Services.
I'm just a program manager of home services. As you mentioned, thank you for having us, Mayor, and council and city staff. We're in our 50th year, and Cottage Grove is the latest city that we have started to serve. We started the Loop five years ago, and now we are expanding into southeast Washington County, and we are honored to provide outdoor chores, home repairs, the Loop, and volunteer opportunities for seniors in Cottage Grove. So thank you very much for the honor, we are happy to be here, and hope to be around for another 50 years.
Fantastic, and I guess, yes, thank you. And I would just say that, you know, our relationship and partnership with DARTS has been amazing, especially with the Loop, as you're calling it, in Cottage Grove. And it was funny, I was talking to Tammy a little bit earlier, and then, and she was commenting when she used to work down at Public Works, the number of people that would call down to Public Works looking for somebody for help, and she commented, boy, back then I wish I would have known that we had this great service, which we do now, and so we'll make sure that that message does get out. But I also know that, you know, in speaking with our county commissioner between the city and the county, we're kind of looking at possibly expanding the services within Cottage Grove at DARTS due to all this, I won't say all this, but this extra transportation dollars that are out there, that we can maybe serve more of our, our community. I know predominantly right now it's more the elderly going to those facilities, but we also go up to the library and, and those neighborhoods up in that area, too.
Yes, so we're honored to serve this area, and we're excited for the partnership with the city of Cottage Grove.
Fantastic. So council, we would like to do a picture of presenting him with the plaque here to honor their 50th anniversary bash.
So if you want to meet me down front.
All right, one, two, three, we're going to take a couple. Big spine, that's beautiful, one more. All right, one, two, three. There's a good one in there.
And I do know that it is up on the screen, just to put it out there, on August 1st, from 5:00 to 9:00, at the Wexford, at Emla Greens and Hastings, there is actually a birthday bash, that, I'm assuming all public is welcome?
It is a ticketed event.
It is ticketed event, okay. So there is a registry, you can register if you want to go, it looks like, so that is dart50thbash.givesmart.com, if you want to sign up for that, looks like there's some silent auction, music, it says drink tasting, that could be a little interesting, games and prizes, and obviously it's, all of this benefits an amazing cause, which is obviously DARTS. So again, thank you for servicing the city of Cottage Grove and our residents. Perfect. All right, so next, under Presentations is, which is hard to believe it's coming up this quickly, isn't it, is the Night to Unite proclamation, and so what I think I'll do, if you're okay with this, is I'm going to have, we'll follow the same thing, I've asked Councilmember Kamada to read the proclamation, and then we'll vote on it and then let you present.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Whereas the Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, along with AAA of Minnesota, Iowa, and local law enforcement agencies are responding, are sponsoring a statewide program called Night to Unite on August 6th, 2024, and whereas Night to Unite is designated to get to know, designed, sorry, to get to know one another in your neighborhood, build neighborhood involvement by bringing police and communities together, and to bring an awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts. And whereas Night to Unite supports the idea that crime prevention is an inexpensive, effective tool in strengthening police and community partnerships, and whereas Night to Unite provides opportunities to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and neighborhoods in Cottage Grove by working together to fight crime and victimization and increase public safety for all citizens. And whereas the citizens of Cottage Grove play an important role in assisting the Cottage Grove Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts, and now therefore, Mayor Bailey and the Cottage, and the city of Cottage Grove do hereby call upon all citizens in Cottage Grove to participate in Night to Unite on August 6th, 2024. Further, let it be resolved that the city council of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, Night to Unite in Cottage Grove.
All right, so Councilmember Kamada, would you like to make the motion on this one?
I would move that we adopt the proclamation.
All right, and a second by Councilmember Thede, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And so now I'm going to introduce to the public here, this kind of gives presentation is our Director of Public Safety, Pete Carter, so welcome, Pete.
Well, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. Tonight I am just the pretty face because I have awesome staff that does this. Obviously, the Night to, we started as Night to Unite, our national night out, back in the late 80s with Greg Rible, and we had the big city celebration at Woodridge Park, Gail Griffith, and took it to a new level with the Night to Unites. I always, I was always content when we had about 30 or 40 neighborhood parties, but of course, the mayor and the council, you guys, that's never good enough, and you challenged the community, so last year we had 58 parties, and I've, I talked with Charlene Raymond, who's the one that coordinates this, and she's anticipating upwards of 70 parties this year, so that's a lot of us out mingling and everything, so it's, it's been a phenomenal opportunity for us to engage. And from the proclamation that Councilmember Kamada read, you know, originally it was all about crime prevention, saying goodbye to crime, we've taken it to a whole new level with, it's not just the police officers, we all know, police show up, kids like the squad car, fire trucks come, and we get pushed out of the way, you know, and you guys have that same thing, everyone wants to know what developments are coming in, what restaurants, so I go with the mayor, you know, and I feel as though Councilmember Thede should be up here with his Strawberry Fest enthusiasm and, and getting people all, you know, riled up for this, and Councilmember Garza, you're in for a treat this year, because we, we like all the councilmembers to go with and, and represent with us, so obviously the, I have the purpose up here, and it's become a lot more, it's really a community engagement, and it's not just the police department, when we do the noon outs and stuff, Public Works brings their truck down, Parks folks come, so it's really all encompassing with all of us, but we really just, we want to invite our residents to sign up, it's really easy, and every party we go to, there's some parties that have eight people, and there's other parties that are whole development with 200 people, so I know you guys have all experienced it, and it's just an awesome opportunity, so just want to highlight that it's not just police anymore, it's, it's all of us with the city, and our Public Safety Board is a huge contributor to this as well. Just want to highlight, we do the noon outs, that's something that we started years ago, too, where we hit a lot of our senior housing, and I just love that picture of firefighter Bill King, he was escorting all the ladies to the tables, so, and then the other picture obviously shows that, that the legends with our ambassadors were there with, you know, council and all of our staff, so. We're maintaining a couple of the same campaigns, obviously there's the Fill the Bag campaign, and that's where we asked for toiletries, for the Friends That Need Food Shelf, they used to do the foods, and now it's just, they need paper toilet, you know, the different toilet papers and paper towels, and, and that, that picture just shows with Sergeant Shone last year, it was phenomenal, we filled the whole, the whole truck up. The Public Safety Board took it upon themselves to purchase backpacks for any neighborhood that wants one, and when we say fill the backpack, it's crazy, people do more than fill a backpack, it all goes down to the Friends That Need Food Shelf, and kids are able to come down and pick out notebooks and pencils, and so they have a similar shopping experience, too, so it's just an incredible opportunity. We've partnered with the Parks and Rec Department, we do the coloring book contest, kind of like me being the director.
Zach, are you aware of this?
Okay, because Zach has awesome staff, too, that Molly's been so involved with us, and so they offer up the, the package with the rental at the outdoor park, and they, they do all the extra things, too, so. How do you sign up? It's all on our webpage, we've done quite a few social media posts already, our communications team will continue to put things out, and I think it's also been in our, the Cottage Grove reports at the last time, so go online, fill out the registration form. The one thing we do ask is that people register by August 1st, just so we have a chance, I mean, it's, we have a whole command center where they have the maps up, and Charlene's assigning, like, who wants the K-9, who, you know, the mayor and I are always bottom of the list, everyone wants the fire truck and the K-9, so, but we, we look forward to any kind of involvement, and it grows every year, so. With that, I was going to ask you guys to read the proclamation, but you already did that, so we appreciate it, so again, I have to give a shout out to community engagement, Officer Ryan Pierre, who's kind of leading, and it's really our support staff, Charlene Raymond really runs with it, so, but everyone else steps up that day, and I get to reap the benefits and have fun and eat good food and socialize, so.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you, and I know, like you said, Councilmember Garza, this will be your first year doing it this way, and, you know, you get tired by the end of the night, but the people and the visits are absolutely amazing, and everybody's excited, no matter who's there, I know.
Well, many of us bring our spouses with to keep us on time.
Thank goodness.
My wife's not afraid to tell me and the mayor that we need to move on, so.
Otherwise, we could talk forever.
We'll talk for hours, yes.
And, and I will just say one last thing about that, they all know where the good food is, too, so word gets out over the radio who's got something special or unique, so that's kind of fun, too.
It does kind of go by seniority, so.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't mind, I, I'm open for all the things, so I'm, I'm open.
There you go.
My, my family's hosting Night to Unite as well, so.
Okay.
I'll get back just in time for the movie and the Kodak sack.
There you go.
It'll work.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. All right, so next on our agenda this evening, council is consent, was there any items that council wanted to pull for further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Kamada, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if you are here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have now been approved. Next is approved disbursement, 8A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Am I doing it right? Did I miss something? Oh, the way they, I looked over there, and I was like, wait, okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Garza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Nine is public hearings, and we do have two public hearings this evening, the first one is Oltman Middle School easement vacation, drainage, and utility easement, and Emily Schmitz, our community development director, is going to walk us through this one and the next one.
I am, good evening, Mayor and Council, this first one, as you indicated, at Oltman Middle School, so as the district starts to work through some of their improvements at some of their facilities throughout town, one of them is at Oltman Middle School, they're planning for a classroom addition, kind of on the south side of Oltman Middle School, and in preparation for that, they're getting awfully close to a water main, so as part of the approvals in the construction, I think it's 2017, that water main looping extend around the entirety of this building, so as a part of this addition, a small portion of that water main actually needs to be relocated, and this slide helps to kind of have a visual, that super light blue line is the current water main location, because of that addition, that water main needs to be relocated to more of that dark blue line, so as a part of that, we do have to vacate that segment of the easement that exists today, and relocate that easement over that relocated water main. So again, in preparation for that work that they're planning for in 2025, we're being proactive and adjusting that easement at this point. So several recommendations in the process before you this evening, I am available, as well as the school district's engineer, if you have some technical questions.
All right, council, any questions for either our staff or the representative from the school district? Okay, I'm seeing none, I'm going to go ahead then officially and open the public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on this particular topic this evening? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and council, it looks like we have three separate motions to complete here.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 2024-106, partially rescinding, terminating, and releasing a permanent easement and temporary easement for water main for Lot 1, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kamada, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, who would like to take number three on the screen?
I will motion to approve a temporary drainage easement and utility easement over a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Garza, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and number four.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the permanent drainage and utility easement over a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. All right, and now we'll move to another public hearing, which is B, is Summer Valley Easement Vacation Final Plaid Development Agreement and Development Plans, and again, Emily Schmitz is here.
Yes, Mayor and Council, second public hearing, typically you don't see these final plats, but we're going to encompass it in because this particular project does require some easement vacations, so Summer Valley, if, if you don't recall, is kind of that final puzzle piece in this area north of Military, kind of at our Woodbury border, it's kind of fun to see this area finally come full circle and complete, but like I said, a couple of easement vacations before we can move forward with the final plat of Summer Valley, a handful of these easements, as the properties surrounding it have developed for some turnaround purposes, as well as some utilities, have extended onto this final piece of the puzzle, so we kind of need to clean the slates, wipe the cleats, the slate clean, before we get that final plat recorded over top. So the final plat is 71 lots, 65 foot wide, it's very similar to those developments that you see surrounding Park View Point, Rolling Meadows, Summer Gate Development is the developer, they are working with Dr. Horton as the builder, planning, of course, well, they're out there moving dirt, if you've been in the area, but having some lots available this, this fall. And finally, with this one, I get very excited about this final trail connection extending into the Wireshed District and their plans, that they've made this beautiful connection with our wonderful Glacial Valley Park building that's finally completed, this project is going to create that connection into their future trail connections up to Woodbury, down to Glacial Valley Park, so I really wanted to highlight that as a part of this wonderful project. And with that, another very wordy recommendation before you, but I am available, and I know the developer is here for technical questions as well, if needed.
All right, first of all, for staff, any questions on this item? Okay, any questions if we want the developer up to the front? I think it's pretty going to be easy for you tonight. All right, so what I'm going to do is go ahead and be official, we'll open the public hearing, if there's anybody that wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time, seeing that there is nobody else in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and council, it looks like, on this one, we have four separate resolutions that we need to do.
Sure.
All right, Councilmember Kamada, you want to start?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2024-103, vacating the public drainage and utility easements within the proposed development parcel PID 0302-721210003.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Kamada, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, who would like to do number three?
I would.
Okay.
I would like to move the recommendation to adopt Resolution 2024-103, vacating the public drainage and utility easements.
That's actually, we just did that one, do number three.
Oh, three, adopt Resolution 2024-104, approving the final plat for Summer Valley.
There we go, so we have a motion by Councilmember Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamada, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion, motion carries, now we'll move to number four on the list.
I will move that we approve the Summer Valley Development Agreement with Summer Gate Development LLC with minor modifications as approved by the city attorney.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Kamada, again, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and number five, last one.
Mayor, I'd like to move we adopt Resolution 2024-105, approving the Summer Valley Development Plans dated May 21st, 2024, prepared by Westwood Professional Services Incorporated, subject to final approval by the city engineer in writing.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede, any discussions on this last one? Again, seeing none, I will call for a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, so thank you. All right, next, we're going to move on, is bid awards, we do have one this evening, which is the Summers Landing 5th Bid Award, and Ryan Burfine, our Public Works Director, is going to walk us through this one, welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, so as you mentioned, this is the Summers Landing 5th Edition Final Streets Improvement, this is the last edition of Summers Landing, so it's kind of interesting, I remember being here in 2016 when we approved, awarded the bid for the first base improvements, and I think at the time it was supposed to be 10 or 12 years to wrap this development up, so, so it's gone, gone very well, and it's kind of exciting to award this last and final project. So we did take bids on last Tuesday, July 19th, we had four bids received, and we did get a good bidding for this project, these, these final streets projects are, you know, pretty straightforward, pretty fast projects that contractors can move through, so it was below our engineer's estimate of $262,230, you can see the little bid there from OMG Midwest, DBA Minnesota Paving and Materials, so with that, I have the recommendation on the screen in front of you, and I will say that this contractor has a long history of working in Cottage Grove, prior to this, they were known as Hard Drive, so many projects, going back with them, so very familiar with this contractor and comfortable with the award.
All right, sounds good, any questions for Ryan at this point? All right, seeing none, thank you, Ryan, council, somebody would like to make a motion on what's on the screen?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-107, awarding the bid for the Summers Landing 5th Edition Final Street Improvement Project to OMG Midwest Inc., doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials, in the amount of $233,967.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thanks again, Ryan. 11 this evening, which is regular agenda, we do not have any items on there, and then we move already to council comments requests, and I will start with Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just want to wish everyone a safe weekend, I know that we've had some unfortunate accidents with regard to swimming and using our public waterways, we're coming off of a lot of flooding, and I just want everyone to be safe out there.
All right, sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Kamada, how about Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, first and foremost, I want to thank the public for coming out to our unfortunately rain-delayed 4th of July celebration this year at Kingston Park, we had an amazing crowd when we moved the event from the 4th, which was a Thursday, to the Sunday, and appreciate the public safety team kind of watching our backs, they saw that the potential for severe weather on the 4th was pretty high in partnership with the National Weather Service, and so they encouraged us to make an adjustment, which we did, and we had a record crowd, it was unbelievable.
It was, um, unbelievable. Uh, we did have our Cottage Grove Lions meeting for July last night, and all I will tell you is, the generosity of the public at that event was unheard of in, um, the several years that we've been participating in this, so, um, we are taking a very strong look at, uh, potentially making this a Sunday after the Fourth of July event on a permanent basis. Um, seemed like it worked out very well for many, many members of the public. I also wanted to thank the sponsors who allowed us to have the fireworks this year. I know Mayor Bailey has mentioned them several times, but, uh, I don't think we can really thank them enough. We had five, $5,000 sponsors. Uh, Tennis Sanitation was, uh, very generous, as well as 3M, Hy-Vee, uh, North Point, and, um, I'm forgetting the fifth, Renewal by Anderson, thank you. So, um, we're very grateful for their participation. Like anything else, the price of fireworks has gone up as well. Um, but, uh, we're gonna make a, a really concerted effort next year to try to put on a $30,000 show, so mayor, I'll be asking you to twist some additional arms at some point. Um, but it was a really nice event. Uh, last but certainly not least, I want to thank all the members of the public safety team and the Parks Department who helped make the event, uh, a safe event for families to come and participate in, and also to keep the park in, in very good shape, checking garbages and so on and so forth. Uh, we had Mike Dandle, Richard Green, and, uh, Sam Anderson from the fire department who were there with the big ladder truck, and I think they probably had three or 400 kids climb on that truck throughout the course of the event, and they did it with a smile for the first child and the last child. We also had our community engagement officer Ryan Pierre, as well as Sergeant Mike McCormick on hand, in addition to numerous other members of public safety team, including, uh, Sergeant Nick Bailey. Um, and again, they made sure that the event was safe for everybody involved, and the kids loved getting the tours of the police cars, as well as the fire truck. Uh, in fact, Sergeant McCormick brought the UTV out, which is something a lot of people don't get to see all the time, so they thought that was pretty neat. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to congratulate one of our own, uh, who's in the room tonight, Zach Doctor, who is our director of Park and Recs, as the new president of the St. Paul Park Newport Lions Club. Uh, if you guys aren't aware, Zach's been a, a very involved member of the Lions Club for, uh, numerous years, and I know he's served in various leadership positions, including treasurer, but, uh, this year, he became the president of that club, and I believe that's a two-year term, is that right? One-year term? Okay, well, if they love you enough, it'll become a two-year term, so. Anyway, um, I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate Zach. It's a, it's a real honor, uh, to be placed in that position. The other thing I wanted to mention, mayor, is, um, during Night to Unite, one of my favorite things is we've now got staff members who travel with us. I know over the last several years, we've had our city administrator, who's gone to numerous parties, et cetera. Great opportunity to gather feedback from, uh, the members of the public, and our staff members aren't just there to, um, smile and, and, uh, say hello, but they actually take copious notes on the things that, um, people bring to us, because, uh, as you might imagine, um, when, when somebody has our ear, um, they, they certainly wanna share their thoughts and ideas for how to improve the community. Um, oftentimes, they wanna compliment, you know, the way in which, uh, you know, city projects are getting done and, and being run, so, uh, it's a real advantage to have city staff out there with us taking notes, and then they can respond in kind to those folks, and, and, uh, I mean, we've had a lot of really good outcomes that, uh, have come out of those ideas. For example, I mentioned Zach earlier, um, it was either last year or two years ago, the Sunny Hill Park group came out and they were asking us about, um, can we get some soccer nets, and can we kind of, you know, put some, some, uh, additional equipment out there for the members of the community, and, and Zach and his team did a great job with that, but that was born out of those conversations. One of the things people love to talk about is, of course, uh, roads. Good or bad, uh, they like to talk about, um, road construction, road construction projects, et cetera, and, uh, there's an awful lot of questions that, that go on out there. Last year, we heard a lot about the, uh, Jamaica Avenue and East Point Douglas Project, which is now in year two, and so I just thought maybe, uh, our public works director, Ryan Burfine, uh, could take a minute and give us a quick update on how that project's coming along. I drove by there earlier today and really seems like it's tracking well, so, uh, if you could, just a moment or two of your time on, kind of where we're at and what's left to be done, I'm sure the public would appreciate it.
Absolutely, uh, mayor, and Councilmember Olson. So as you mentioned, we are in year two. It was kind of a different challenge this year. Year one was the, the constant traffic control changes at Jamaica and East Point, and, and this year, it was kind of moving through those different phases. We did the roundabout first, we got an early start this spring, of course, with the, the lack of a winter. Um, their goal was to have that roundabout open by July 4th, and they were able to, to beat that, um, beat that date, so that was good. Then we moved behind Target, and behind Target was a challenging area because the road is too narrow to do the full reconstruct that was needed, but then keep two lanes of traffic open. It just physically wasn't possible, so, um, we had to kind of strategically do this, this one-way traffic pattern, um, both to try and best serve the area, but also keep access to that 92nd Street cul-de-sac that has all the townhomes. So, um, that first phase of, of Phase Four, as we call it, Phase Four A, so that'll be wrapping up, um, in the next week, and then we're looking about, you know, the week with, uh, July 27th, and it's, so the following week after that, that we'd switch to the other side. So, we'll be complete with the first part of that total reconstruct, um, and we'll flip to the, to the other side of the road, um, with that continued one-way traffic pattern, so, um, folks will have to bear with that for a little while longer, and kind of while they're doing that, the, the final piece of the project is the mill and overlay from kind of Wells Fargo roughly down to Menards, that last stretch of that old section of road. That section's not as old, the curb's in a lot better shape, so that was really good for a mill overlay, and then you're probably seeing that the streetlights, uh, the old ones have been taken down, um, the ones that had turned purple at one, at one point and were fixed, um, because they were, yeah, a problem for us, but we have the new streetlights going up, so that's very exciting to see as well. So, probably wrapping up sometime in September, um, seems like Mother Nature's gonna cooperate a little better moving forward, um, with not quite as much rain, which would be, I hate to ask for not rain after two years of droughts, but, um, we could use a little break to get these projects wrapped up.
Well, thank you very much for the update. I know that, uh, people have been eager to see that, um, finished product when it's all done, and, uh, as you, um, predicted when we first authorized this project, it was gonna take two construction seasons, and it certainly is gonna take all of that, but the good news is, um, if, if we get cooperative weather, uh, sometime in September, the whole thing will be open and people will be able to enjoy much better traffic flow and a much safer experience as well. Thank you to you and your team for doing that. And with that, mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Uh, now, Councilmember Thede.
Yes, thanks. Well, one of the things that I wanted to, to kind of mention, and, and, uh, that over this, uh, past month, uh, we had both the police and the fire departments present their five-year strategic plans, uh, very well done, and, and similar formats with the two of them, so they're, uh, they're easy to, to kind of follow along with and, and understand. Uh, some great metrics that are, are being shown, that are gonna be done and everything, and, and so I would, uh, highly recommend to, to people that if they're, uh, interested at all at that, uh, to contact, uh, the city, go on the, maybe the website, I don't know if it's available on a website, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a good, uh, good read, uh, and, uh, a good way to, to understand kind of the, uh, the mindsets and the direction that, uh, that our public safety department is, uh, is headed down, so, uh, it was an excellent job, and, and I got to see both presentations twice, being, being the liaison to the, uh, Public Services Commission, so. Um, let's see, what else? I, I think that's all I had.
All right, thank you, and good, uh, good call out for both of those, they were really good. Uh, Councilmember Garza.
Um, I don't really have much. I'm just looking forward to, uh, Night to Unite, getting out there and continuing to meet our community and our neighbors. Um, it's gonna be a fun evening, so I'm just looking forward to that. That's pretty much all I have. Everybody be safe this week, um, pay attention to all the things that are going on out there. We don't want any more accidents, but, other than that.
There you go. Thank you. Uh, and I've just got two items for, uh, for the public. One is, um, uh, at this last Friday night, we did have, I guess that'd be the makeup, uh, event for, uh, Movies in the Park, and, um, the good news is the next, this coming Friday, which is, uh, July 17th at 7 o'clock, uh, we have another, uh, Movies in the Park event happening, and by the way, just so you know, this is, or 19th, I'm sorry, 19th, my apologies, 19th, I wrote the wrong day down. Uh, the, so Friday, July 19th at 7:00 PM, and the movie this week is Migration, uh, which, believe it or not, my wife and I just watched it less than a week ago, and it's absolutely amazing, it's fun. Uh, but again, it's at Highlands Park, or for those that wonder, it's the Spash Pad. Uh, they have a lot of extra events that are happening there, a lot of, uh, things that are free, but also things if you wanna purchase, uh, you know, food trucks, things like that. Um, when I was able to drive by there, I wasn't able to stop this last week, but when I drove by, there was a lot of people there, uh, so you can tell that our community, uh, maybe some of the surrounding communities too, are very excited about this, uh, having, uh, Movies in the Park, so I encourage everyone to come out, and it's supposed to be a, I don't wanna jinx us, but it's supposed to be a nice, uh, nice weather day, uh, so hopefully, uh, we'll see a large crowd there and, uh, come enjoy this movie, uh, Migration. It'll, it's fun, both kids and adults, I will tell you that.
One other thing?
Yes.
It will now, or we are going to offer the movie in closed caption.
Oh, that's right.
For any of our community members that would love to come out, um, I've figured it out, and we will have closed caption for everyone.
Yeah, and it was funny, and I apologize, I didn't bring that up, because that is, you know, as we learn things, if you will, and people reach out and say, hey, can we do this, or can you do that? Uh, one of the things that was, uh, asked of us is for, uh, people, uh, that obviously are, are deaf, uh, if they're able to, um, if we can do closed captioning, and, uh, found out how to do that, so that's pretty amazing, so we're glad that, uh, we're able to see that happen. Um, and then lastly, um, I just wanna mention, uh, I know, uh, the city of Cottage Grove as of late, and Zach's in the back corner back there, but, uh, we have been, um, just starting to give information out to the public regarding the, uh, sales tax referendum that's gonna be, uh, before the voters, uh, this, uh, this coming November. And, um, a lot of the information that's out there, I just wanted to mention, you know, when the, when the staff is working, uh, to put information out to the public, it is truly just that. It's truly to give good information to the public, uh, so that when you decide what you wanna do, uh, as a, as a, a citizen of Cottage Grove, what you, whether you wanna vote for or against, it's totally up to you, uh, but the idea, uh, is to give you as much information to be informed as possible. Um, what, the reason I bring that up is I know I happened to see, on one of our city, uh, postings, uh, we had, uh, uh, put out a map that kind of shows sales taxes, uh, or sales tax effects in other communities around the metro, and I know there was kind of a, uh, a, a feeling, if you will, uh, on that thread, that basically made it, it's like, well, you know, just because everybody else does it, we have to do it. Um, I don't believe that that was the intent. Uh, my belief of the intent is a lot of us are shopping in these other communities and don't realize that we're supporting a sales tax, uh, that is providing parks and infrastructure or whatever in these other communities, so I do appreciate the fact that, um, staff , uh, work together to put that information out, because again, it is just that, it's information, so that when you think you're going to another community and you're buying